We'll call this council meeting Monday, November 14th to order. Invocation given by myself and the pledge allegiance by Ms. Frederick.
Let us pray. Father God, we just want to thank you for this day you've given us, Father, and just the many blessings you bestowed upon us. Father, right now, since we begin the Thanksgiving, Christmas season, Father, we just want to thank you for your greatest gift, your son, Jesus Christ. Father, just look over this meeting. Give us wisdom and guidance in all we do. In Jesus Christ's name I pray. Amen.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Phillips, will you do the roll call?
Mr. Dahl?
Here.
Ms. Tolliver?
Here.
Mr. Ashburn?
Here.
Ms. Frederick?
Here.
Mr. Bailey?
Here. Thank you. Move to adoption of the agenda. Do I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
I make a motion.
Do I have a second?
I second.
Any discussion on the agenda? Hearing none will vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Agenda is adopted. Move to the approval of previous minutes. Do I have a motion to approve the previous minutes?
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the minutes? Hearing none will vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Minutes are approved. It's no old business, so we'll go straight into new business. Number one is a public hearing for the alcohol license for Jeffersons. This is the time and place for the public hearing. Is there anyone here for this? Thank you. Anyone here against this? Ms. Phillips, will you do the investigation report?
The applicant is David Carrula, type of license restaurant retail liquor, class one, doing business as Jefferson Scottsboro. Location, 1402 County Park Road, Suite 2B. There were five businesses surveyed with no objections. Near church and school footage requirements are met. License application is in order. Health, fire, and building inspections comply, and zoning verification complies.
Thank you. This will conclude the public hearing. Do I have a motion to approve this?
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
I second.
Any discussion on this? Hearing none will vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Two, ordinance to amend the zoning ordinance to rezone 1290 Porter Road, and this is a rezoning from R1 to C4. Do I have a motion to approve this?
I make that motion.
Do I have a second?
I second.
Any discussion?
Yes, Mr. Bailey, I would just like to say, I was not up here when they had the work session and the public hearing, but I was out in the audience.
Yes, ma'am.
But I have done some research, and if the retention pond, when the retention pond is built, I've heard from a couple of engineers and other property owners that that would alleviate any problem that comes along. And also drove out there, and there has already been a ditch dug behind some of the adjoining property owners since that public hearing, which would alleviate some of the water problems that they're having now. Did they pay for it? Yes.
Anyone else have any comments? Hearing none will vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Number three, ordinance calling for election of the city of Scottsboro on February 28, 2003, for the renewal and continuation of the 2.5 mil Advorum school tax in the city. So I have a motion to approve this election?
I make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on that? Hearing none will vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Mr. Bailey, I don't oppose it, but I feel like I'm the election administrator at the courthouse, and I do a lot of work with each election. And I feel like if I voted for it, it might be a conflict of interest because I will get paid to help with that election. So I will abstain for that reason.
Okay, thank you. So, anyone opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Number four, consider the resolution for a one-time pay raise. For the city, this is our December one-time pay raise. Do I have a motion to approve this?
I make that motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Any discussion on that? Hearing none will vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Number five, consider the resolution to award equipment financing bid, and the low bid was to First Jackson Bank at 3.03%. Do I have a motion to approve that?
I'll make the motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on that? Hearing none will vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Number six, consider the approval of the remaining 10% of the 2022-2023 budget. And the remaining 10% is $2,527,787. And that comes to a total amount for the full budget of $24,972,198. So do I have a motion to approve that, remaining 10%?
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Any discussion on the budget? Hearing none will vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Budget's approved. Number seven, consider the renewal of the Impact Learning Center's lease agreement. This is a five-year lease with the option to renew for another five. So do I have a motion to approve that?
I make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on this? Hearing none will vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Number eight, consider the Mint Creek construction and maintenance agreements. Do I have a motion to approve this?
I make.
Motion.
Okay. Do I have a second?
I'll say.
Any discussion on this? Hearing none will vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Number nine, consider the approval to pay traffic signal invoice for Highway 72 at Scottsboro Commons. This is an amount of $75,131.40 that would come out of capital improvements fund. Do I have a motion to approve this?
I make that motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Hearing none will vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Number 10, the library board appointment. In your packet, you'll see the names who are put in for the library board. So I'll open the floor for nominations. Someone like to nominate somebody on the library board?
I'd like to nominate Candace Paradise.
Okay, Candace Paradise. Okay, anyone else would like to nominate? We'll close nominations. You have Candace Paradise nominated. So I have a motion to approve Candace Paradise on the library board.
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
I second.
Any discussion on that? Hearing none will vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Candace goes back on the library board. And so we'll go to number 11, museum commission appointments. We've got two names and two spots. So I'll open the floor for nominations.
I'd like to nominate Susan Fisher.
Okay, Susan Fisher.
I'd like to nominate Clint Keane.
Okay. Since two names and two spots, we'll just put these two together. Do I have a motion to approve both of these on the museum commission appointments? Both for reappointment.
I'll make that motion.
Yeah? Do I have a second?
I second.
Any discussion on this? Hearing none will vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We'll leave the reports to the end of the work session. So if I could get a motion to adjourn from the meeting...
I'll make that motion.
Okay, do I have a second?
I second.
Any discussion on the meeting? Hearing none will vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Adjourn from the meeting, just one second, and I'll swap over to the work session. We'll call this work session Monday, November 14th to order. We'll dispense with formalities. I'll start with number one. Discuss the ordinance for the medical cannabis dispensaries. Mr. Dietz, Mr. Wallensford?
Your floor. Thank you all for giving us time to speak with you this evening. Again, my name is John Dietz. I'm the owner of Mountain Top Dispensary here in Scottsboro. Tonight, we're asking you to move forward in favor of allowing medical cannabis dispensaries in the city of Scottsboro and creating ordinance therein. This would allow patients determined by the AMCC program to gain access to the newly designed state program without disabled or shut-in patients having to commute to other areas of the state to get prescriptions. This would also allow new business inside of the city. In the future, it would allow more jobs, as I spoke about this in the past, to develop right here in our city with good-paying wages and prominent tax revenue, plus the trickle-down effect of keeping money spent and earned right here in Scottsboro. This would benefit also packaging, labeling, plastics, and other supporting companies for this industry as potential suppliers and services rendered. With me today is Tony Wallensford, who's also an interested party. But before we hear from him, I'd like to go back to the last time that I spoke here in council and a reprise of the issues about youth targeting in our city and why it could lead to an alarming problem if we're not careful. So personally, in my opinion, before we come to some type of resolve or determination of ordinances here in the city for medical cannabis and/or subsidiary products, we need to come to some type of resolve to either ban or deter the sales of youth-targeted products in our city, such as the products that lay before you. I've also supplied you with copies of the True Candy brands that are being infringed upon for comparison. For instance, the Caribou Ginger Lemon are not only infringing upon intellectual property of Caribou UK brands, but also contain wording and imagery that are subject to attract younger audiences. Cannaburst is also an IP-infringed Starburst, which is owned by Mars Incorporated. Stony Patch, which sits in front of you, is an infringement of Sour Patch Candy, which is also owned by Hershey &amp; Mondelez International. The package of Warheads that sits in front of you is also an IP infringement of Warheads owned by Impact Confections. The QR codes on these packages lead to a very vague web address with three web redirects and have also been found to be operating under a VPN with no home address. Upon further investigation, these infringed brands also do not have accurate or industry-standard chain of custody records. They do not provide accurate analysis. Most importantly, the information such as potency, toxicities, whether there's been use of pesticides, or even the country of origin. In that alone is very concerning. This is not a good look for the city of Scottsboro, the state of Alabama, nor the industry in which my business operates within. All four of these samples were purchased on 11/13 prior to this meeting, all inside the city limits of Scottsboro. Even though the state of Alabama strictly prohibits logos not authorized by the Alabama Medical Cannabis Commission in the medical program, there will still be gas stations, liquor stores, smoke shops, and vape shops alike selling these products with the targeting towards underage children. I've spoke on this before when I've said some electronic cigarette manufacturers play this same advertising strategy to use childlike imagery and even rip off well-established brands to promote their products, which lead to the uptick of youth usage. The study released back in 2021 by the Food and Drug Administration and the CDC estimated that more than 2 million U.S. middle school and high school students reportedly had used or tried something similar to those advertisements or those adverts in effect. Therefore, it is my professional opinion that these mentioned products are advertised cheap and are branded specifically as a target. This would also lead me to believe that they pose a consumer risk, and I would not consider them to be safe or of value to anyone in our city limits looking for a legitimate health product. I would ask the city council to step in and resolve that important issue before it gets any bigger. Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't really have anything prepared, and I'm certainly a novice in this area. Mr. Dietz and I have a game associated through real estate transaction. But I see the passion that he has for his industry. One of the concerns that I've had for some time has been the opiate pandemic in our county and area. And, you know, we have done tremendous strides over the last several years to combat that. But as we have discussed in our local committee and medical professionals are saying and telling us that, you know, there has been no documented case of overdose using medical cannabis for pain and anxiety relief, which we cannot say about our opiate pandemic. I believe opiate manufacturers know exactly what they were doing. I believe they did it with intent to have an addicted marketplace. And I believe that this is a viable solution to that. The state of Alabama is in the process of formulating their regulations, and we welcome regulations. We want regulations because we want to make sure that this process is done properly. We have considered some products that we have made a decision to leave on the shelf because we did believe that the branding and marketing attracted younger users. And we don't want to be associated with that. So many of the cities in the state of Alabama have begun to approve these local ordinances. It is a requirement that the local municipality have an ordinance. We would welcome to work with the city of Scottsboro to develop that with you. But any questions you have, Mr. Dietz, myself, Dr. Bradford has been working with us on this. Unfortunately, he was not available this evening. But we're open to having a constructive discussion, and we want to be responsible. And we want to be at the table to make sure that there is minimal abuse to this program. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Myself, Mr. Dahl, the mayor, Mr. Kennermer have already began these meetings. And any other council have any kind of questions or anything for either one of these men?
Are we talking about a physician prescribed marijuana?
I'll let Mr. Dietz address that more. But yes, this is something that's coming in the next 12 months or so to become available in the state of Alabama. It is under prescription medication, and you will have to go to specifically-approved and inspected dispensaries to receive that medication. So otherwise, you could have somebody prescribe the product here. But if there's not a dispensary, they would have to go to, say, a Huntsville or a Birmingham to fulfill those prescriptions. It's not that they can't have them prescribed or fulfilled, but they wouldn't be able to do it locally. So that's what we're asking, is that for cancer patients, shut-ins, things like that, they need accessibility. Again, the state of Alabama is putting all that together now. But it does require a local approval and ordinance to set up those operations.
What type of items are allowed and what type of items are not allowed?
Again, Mr. Dietz will be the authority on that, and I think it's still being discussed at the state level. But there'll be, I know, for instance, there are no smokable products available, mainly pill form, if I'm not mistaken. But we're talking about enemas, we're talking about pill form, we're talking about things like that, non-recreational-type products.
Anyone else have any questions on this? And after our meetings and what we've already gone through, I believe we could have something ready before our next meeting to go over. Go ahead.
I would recommend that we look at Huntsville's ordinance. I think it's thorough. And if you are looking at adopting such an ordinance, that would be a good place to start.
So we will put this on the next meeting, which will be the 28th. Thank you all. We'll move to number two. Discuss the 2023 airport funding project. Sandlin here tonight. Mayor, I guess you're in control of that one.
Okay, thank you, Mr. President. You've got in your packets some information from the Alabama Department of Transportation regarding a pre-application for funding. We've already done the pre-application. What this would do is address reimbursement for fencing, seal coat, and mark the runway. The fencing was not included in the original because we've already done the fencing, and it will be reimbursed with this agreement. So this is authorizing me to sign the agreement with Aldott.
Anyone have any questions on this? Hearing none, we'll move that to the next meeting also. The next meeting will be the 28th. There'll be no meeting next Monday on 21st. And number three, discuss the hazard mitigation resolution. Mayor, go over that.
Okay, this is every five years, emergency management is required to have a hazard mitigation update. And that has been completed, has actually completed in 2021 due to the pandemic and some other issues. It's just now getting from Tarr Cog to, and the state to us. So all the municipalities, as well as the county in Jackson County, need to approve, and there's an offered resolution of adoption in there to be able to qualify for hazard mitigation funding.
Anyone have any questions on that?
Just for information, if we don't adopt this, federal funding would not happen if a storm comes through.
Yes.
Correct.
Causes damage and so on.
All right. We'll put that on next week's, or next meeting also. Number four, discuss the frontage road extension proposals. Mr. Little?
I think you have in your package tonight a proposal to design and survey the service road extension from where it ends at the cattle stampede to Byron Road. And this is with Volkret, which has done work with us in the past, and we currently have an agreement with them on the design of the frontage road we just finished, so.
This is the amount right now will be $21,176.
Plus the $1,800 for the surveying. Yep.
So you've got two different things in your packet on this. So anyone have any questions on this project? Hearing none, we'll put that on next meeting also. Thank you. Number five, discuss the inmate feed agreement. Mayor?
This is a continuation of the agreement that we have with the county, county commission, the sheriff, and the city of Scottsboro to feed the inmates at the city jail.
Anyone have any questions on the feed agreement? Hearing none, we'll move that to the next meeting also. Number six, discuss the tennis courts resurfacing. Mr. Wood?
Thank you. If you remember, about six or eight weeks ago, we had the one bid come in to resurface the tennis courts. It came in at $48,800. That was the only bid. We rejected it in light of being able to negotiate a little bit. If we do the pressure washing ourselves prior to him winning bid or doing the work, he came down on the crack membrane that they use to fill in the cracks. His new bid that he came in with was $46,000, still above what we had budgeted last year, but it was all the room he could do.
Do you know the difference in what we had budgeted to?
$36,000 is what we had budgeted at the beginning of last year when I spoke with him back in February to get this going. You know, he notified that said that he wouldn't even be able to add it to his list until this upcoming spring anyways. So it is about a $10,000 difference.
So you'd be looking at $10,000?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Anyone have any questions about the resurfacing? We'll put that $10,000 on the next meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you. Number seven, discuss the request to rezone. It says 95 Gant Hill Road. That's not quite right. Ms. Tipton?
Actually, it's Zero Phillips Drive. We go in on Gant Hill Road, but nobody else will. We're asking for this property to be rezoned from R1 to R3, which will lower the lot frontage. It would lower the minimum so they can get more houses in there and make better use of the property. I don't know what your millage rate is, but right now I pay $400 in taxes on an entire 41, plus or minus acres, and it could probably turn a half a million dollars if we can do this. D.R. Horton has offered us a letter of intent, and that would be the builder over there.
She's asking to rezone this land on Phillips Drive from R1 to R3. Do you all have anything you want to comment or question? Okay. Yes. Yes, all right, thank you. Anyone have any questions for them on this? Okay, all right. So let me go over, because I know there's a lot of people here for this. So we'll be moving this to the next meeting for a vote to go to a public hearing, okay? And then after the vote, if it's favorable, it would go to a public hearing. So the vote will be on 20, November 28th. The public hearing will be on December 12th. Be there unless we could do the public hearing, and then after that, there wouldn't be a vote on the property till January 9th. That's the quickest turnaround with all the laws and all, so we'll make sure everybody had those dates. So the 28th will be our next meeting. We'll vote on this whether or not to have a public hearing, and then if it's favorable to have one, the public hearing will be on December 12th. Okay? So that will conclude the meeting. There's no delegations tonight, so we'll go to reports. Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. President. First, I'd like to again ask for the public's patience. I think everybody's seen the roadwork that started in the last few weeks, and there's going to be quite a bit of traffic and, and slow-ups with, with everything that's going on, but ask for your patience. Whataburger's groundbreaking is this Thursday, the 17th, at 10 o'clock, and the permanent signal installation at Publix started today. They started mounting the poles and arms today, so they should be through that two weeks. Is that right? About two weeks should be, the permanent signal should be active. Other than that, we won't have another meeting before Thanksgiving. I'd like to encourage everyone to have a safe and happy Thanksgiving. That's all I got, Mr. President.
Thank you. Mr. Dahl?
I don't have anything except to wish everybody a happy holidays.
Thank you. Ms. Dahl?
I'm so glad to be back. I am so happy to be sitting here tonight in front of our city. I want everybody to continue praying for my mother and my family, and other than that, have a happy holiday and hope to see everybody back on the 28th. Thank you.
Thank you. So glad to have you back. Mr. Ashman?
I don't have anything tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Frederick?
I just want to say there was a great Veterans Day program last Friday at Collins. If you missed it, or even if you got to go there, the junior high had to reschedule theirs from last Wednesday because they had the, all the sickness there, and the school went to e-learning, so this Thursday at, at the junior high school at 10 o'clock, they'll have a Veterans Day program, and it'll be great, because my granddaughter's in it.
Thank you. And so I'll remind everyone, there'll be no meeting next Monday. The next meeting will be November 28th, and then we'll go over December's schedule. December 5th and 12th, we'll do a work session and meeting, both those nights, and there'll be no other meetings in December. We won't come back until January 9th with a work session and meeting, so. And go over the garbage schedule, because I get chewed out at home about the garbage schedule. Next week is Thanksgiving. I hope you all, all have a great Thanksgiving, but if your garbage, which I know all my neighbors is on Thursday, your garbage will be on Wednesday next week, so don't forget that, all right? That's, that's the only one that's changing next week, so, so just a reminder now, and the city will post that over and over, so. So thank you, everyone, for coming. We're adjourned.